Good morning. We call the Wycomico County Council meeting to order for legislative session 2019-12 for June 18, 2019. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father, to the Son, to the Holy Spirit, to the Father, to the Son, 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 to the Father, to[154.61]
...in a fifth grader. The answer is no. Oh, I can tell you that. And I have one more to give. And this is a proclamation. Is Brian Duprevall with us? Brian here? Brian, join me up here. This is a proclamation that recognizes Brian Duprevall for Maryland 3A State Shot Put Champion. Whereas, a number of track and field athletes from Wycomico County Public Schools joined top athletes from around the state in late May 2019 to compete in the Maryland Track and Field State Finals. And whereas, Brian Duprevall, a senior at James Z. Bennett High School, stepped into the circle and on his first throw pushed the heavy ball 53 feet even. And whereas, Brian's distance proved to be the top in the state for 3A competitors, making him the state champion in shot put. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council congratulates Brian Duprevall for winning the title of Maryland 3A State Champion in Shot Put. Signed by all the members of the Wycomico County Council.
Yeah. As he already said, my name is Brian Duprevall. I'm a graduate from Bennett. I plan on attending Morgan State University to pursue a future career in track and field. And as he already said, I feel shot put. It's basically a 12-pound ball, just very condensed and heavyweight. You put it on your neck and you find some way to get across the circle. You just launch it further than everybody else.
Thank you to all for your accomplishments. I mean, you made Wycomico County proud, so thank you all very, very, very much.
Thank you, Councilman McCain. One thing I have to explain is that, if you don't mind, we would need the proclamations back from Mrs. Hurley when you leave because Councilman and Vice President Dodd is not here today and has not had the chance to sign it. We want all the signatures on there before you get it. We will certainly make sure that we get them back to you. I'm guessing we'll mail them to you or whatever is most convenient for you. But if Mrs. Hurley's on the end here, just make sure that she gets the proclamations. That'd be wonderful. Thank you very much. Again, thanks, Bill. Mr. Taylor, good morning.
Good morning. One bill on the agenda this morning is Bill Number 2019-05. It was introduced at the last meeting on June the 4th. It is an act to amend the Wycomico County Classification and Pay Plan by adding positions in the sheriff's office. The two positions happen to be two deputy first-class positions and one corporal position. Now, at that meeting, that last meeting on June 4th, there was a, maybe not a consensus, but certainly a sense of counsel that they might want to consider this as an emergency legislation. And we have prepared, Ms. Hurley and I have prepared, a bill for that purpose. It would be an emergency bill. It would have to be an amendment of what is currently introduced. And this is on for a public hearing today as well, of course.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Now, before we get into the public hearing, I would let any of the students, if you would like to leave, feel free to. You're not being disrespectful. We get it all the time. Usually, they're leaving mad. They don't leave happy, you know?
They don't have to go back to school.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Great job. Bye-bye. Well, if anybody's outside that wants to come in, they, it would be okay. So at this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill 2019-05. Again, it's not only to approve the three positions, but as Mr. Taylor suggested, the council could be looking to amend this to make it emergency legislation today. So if you have any comments that you would like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good to see you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the County Council, President Cannon and staff, and everyone seated here today. My name is Jessica Murphy, and I'm a First Sergeant with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, and I live in Wycomico County, Maryland, for the past 25 years. Been with the sheriff's office for 21 years. I'm also the president of the Fraternal Order of Police in Wycomico County. I would like to first thank you for considering this as emergency legislation. I think it's really important, and we always appreciate your continued support of law enforcement in this county. And through the years, we know that you have done so, because I have stayed 21 years because of that reason, you know, of how you've treated all of us. I was asked to speak on behalf of the sheriff, because he's not here, but I apologize, as I'm not as eloquent as he is, so if I seem a little nervous, I'm sorry. All right. Just a couple of things. I'll keep it very brief, and, because I believe in brevity, of course. So since the sheriff has been in office, I believe we've added a couple of positions, but they were to the schools. We have never really added any positions to Road Patrol. And I just did a quick study of it, and there is no set formula for manpower staffing for police departments, because it's so many variables involved there. You've got how many people in the county, you know, what the demographic population is like, what the crime rates are like, so there's really no such standard. So I ran a national average study, just some quick numbers. The national average for sheriff's departments with a per capita between 50 and 100,000 is 103, and we sit at 90 right now. So I think there's more than justification for adding these positions. With that said, we all know that there's a state of emergency. Governor Hogan has declared a state of emergency for this opioid crisis. And although Wycomico County is doing an excellent job at handling that, as I am a member of the COAT team, or the Community Outreach Addictions Team, we are doing a really good job at addressing this. It doesn't, you know, we still need those officers in support of handling this crisis, and I think that's really important, and of course, it's important enough to the governor. So again, just wanted to thank, like I said, I'll keep it brief, and if there's any questions you have of me, I'm here to stand and answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, First Sergeant. Thank you. Any other public comments? Morning, President Shawnee.
My name is Marya Shawnee, and I'm President of Wycomico County NAACP. And I think I spoke at another time when the sheriff was here, and he talked about his needs. And I just rise, on behalf of the NAACP, to say that we support these three positions.
Thank you, President Shawnee. Any other public comments? Seeing on, that concludes the public comments. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2019-05. Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Are we able to do it like it is, or do we have to make these amendments?
There is, Mrs. Hurley has provided us with the documentation if we want to consider the amendment, but we need an amendment and a second on the floor in order to begin that process. Joe's making the amendment. Do we have a second? Could you? Okay, so the amendment, to be clear, is for emergency legislation, correct? And we have a second? Ernie's the second?
Yes.
Okay, discussion. If I could, Councilman Hastings, could I ask you to read what is prepared as far as what's necessary for it to be established as emergency legislation?
Yes, once again, this is 2019-05 emergency legislation. I can read the whole bill if that's, or...
Yeah, everything is in the bold print, yes.
Okay.
It's only a page.
Okay. Get ready, folks, this is long. An act to amend the Wycomico County Classification and Pay Plan by adding positions to the sheriff's office, whereas to effectively administer county personnel of Wycomico County Classification and Pay Plan as standardized titles and job, common job language, and whereas the Wycomico County Sheriff has advised that the legal distribution of opioid and other dangerous drugs and compounds in the county constituents constitutes an emergency affecting both public health, safety, and welfare of county residents in a manner that is both sudden and unexpected, and recommends that immediate action of the three positions to provide county with additional law enforcement capability to be more effectively, to more effectively respond to this emergency. Now, therefore, in reliance upon the advice and recommendation of the sheriff, I require vote of at least five members of the county council to enact legislation as emergency measure. Section 1, be it enacted and ordained by the county council of Wycomico County in Maryland in legislative session, that Wycomico County Classification and Pay Plan is amended and follows as an emergency measure affecting the health and safety, welfare of the matter in which it's suddenly and unexpectedly risen, in which it requires immediate action to the public, in the public interest. This is, of course, the, the following positions are added to Wycomico County Office: two deputy first-class positions, one corporal position. Section 2, it is therefore declared for the purpose of Section 311.G of the Charter that emergency, to be described by the sheriff as stated above, exists. Section 3, it further enacted that this bill will not be codified in the Wycomico County Code. Section 4, it will be further enacted that this bill, known as Bill Number 2019-05 of Wycomico County, and will become effective immediately after its passage. If a timely petition for referendum is filed, the bill shall remain in force but shall not stand repealed 30 days after rejection by a majority of the qualified voters of Wycomico County in a referendum, certified correct as passed and adopted Wycomico County Council, County of Maryland this day, the 18th of June 2019.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. Any other discussion, yes? Any other discussion on the amendment as read? Seeing on, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Any other discussion on the Legislative Bill 2019-05 as amended? Seeing on, all those in favor will begin with Councilman McCain.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Legislative Bill 2019-05 as amended has passed as emergency legislation.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mrs. Hurley, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on the agenda this morning is Resolution Number 95, 2019, declaring support for a kinder world. And we have Mr. Michael Lloyd White, CEO, World Kindness USA, and immediate past Chair, Secretary General to the peak global body, the World Kindness Movement.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you, council. Thank you, President. And thank you Administrator Laura for expediting this resolution. As you know, this comes on the back of the City of Salisbury's campaign for a kinder world, and brings me to the city for the third official time in less than 12 months. We've just completed our vetting for the city to submit its international listing as a world kindness city. This will be presented in Switzerland in October. Part of the criteria, part of those KPIs, kindness performance indicators, are quite complex, but one of them is the influence and the impact the city is having on all sectors of the community, including engaging surrounding districts, or in this case, the county. It's about walking the talk. This is not a proclamation. To be really clear, and why this is significant, and why I've come so far, as you can tell by my accent, that's right, Washington, D.C. Via Sydney, or Sydney via Washington, D.C., I should say.
We thought that was an Eastern Shore accent.
The real south, down under. Why this is significant is because it's coming at a time when reaching agreement, unanimous agreement on anything, particularly in the political landscape, let alone the virtual landscape, is a struggle, because people are bringing virtual baseball bats to every conversation. Now, the city has gone through this rigorous process, and part of that vetting was to ask first responders, to ask the university, healthcare providers, educators, are they on board with this? Are they aware of what we're doing, of what they are doing? And how would they rate the city's engagement in this process? And I'm pleased to tell you that the information we received from the community on their endeavors is 10 out of 10. That includes the relationship within the council. That includes a relationship between the city's council and their staff and the community. And as such, they are now putting a public kindness index, a survey on there, to find out where they are. Now, it doesn't mean you are the kindest city or the kindest county. What it means is that you are prepared to walk the talk. You are prepared to draw a line in the sand, to suggest and to say with pride that the campaign of fear and hate comes to a halt when it reaches our border. Because that's the challenge we have. Kindness is not about hearts and flowers, sugar and spice, and all things nice. It is about the courage to be kind, the courage to stand up and do what is right rather than what is popular, the courage to leave your comfort zone, doing something you don't want to do. Whether it's in a school ground, sticking up for a kid who you may not like, or whether it's in a boardroom, or in our corridors of government, we need to have the kinder option as our default process in all our decision-making processes. And for you to put this on the agenda so quickly, within less than 12 months of the city following suit, I'm astounded. And I would like to thank you, John, particularly our short, brief conversation, but I know that came on the back of Grace Foxwell Murdoch's amazing work, but she is one woman. And one of the clearest points I can make is this has to be sustainable. It can't rest on the shoulders of one person. That's why there is a kindness commission setting up in each of the cities and communities that are involved. And I know I've taken up more than my time, and I'm grateful for your patience, and thank you for your kindness. And I hope that this resolution passes as the first, being the first county in the United States of America to get on board with this. And that's something you should take some pride in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Michael, in order to get a unanimous vote, I did let the council know that we were presenting this personally in Switzerland. Thank you. That's a bad joke.
That's okay.
Be kind.
That's okay. We did talk about that on the phone. Did anybody have any questions, or you're across all the material that Laura swamps you with?
No, we thank you for your, I know I've seen Michael, I know how many times I've seen you now in Salisbury, so it's great to see you, you know, spending so much time with us, and it's a great mission, and I think there's bigger things to come.
This is going to be the epicenter for the USA for kindness. You watch. The idea is for this to get some momentum, some critical mass, to get this through the Senate, through the Congress, and see a co-sponsored motion at the United Nations. It's starting here, and each of you have a role to play. So when you go back to wherever you've come from today, put kindness on your agenda, raise a motion, and ask how you can get involved. Grace has got plenty of time.
She's doing great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again. Any further discussion from council? Seeing on, all those in favor of Resolution 95, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, do we have a first and second on that one?
Give me a motion, a sec.
I'll make the motion, maybe.
I'll second.
Motion, second. Thank you very much. Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Hurley.
Next on the agenda, we have discussion with the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Good morning. It's still morning. Yes. Good to see everybody.
We come prepared?
You always do.
Yes, we do.
It may be brief today, right?
Yes.
Some are serious.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, or thank you for recognizing, first of all, our students and our staff who work so hard every day, specifically today, our athletes and our destination imagination winners, really appreciate, and I know they do too, the recognition.
It's a lot of work.
Yes. We also, before we get to the agenda, want to thank you again for your support through the budget process for the funding to support Imagine 2022. It means an incredible amount to all of us as we work to move the school system forward, so just wanted to, once again, tell you thank you. I want to recognize the other board members who are here. Maybe do you want us to introduce ourselves first, or?
Introduce yourselves, yeah, that'd be great, and then...
Donna Hanlon, Superintendent.
Micah Saul, for Director of Secondary Education Income, Chief Finance, and Operations.
Jesse Reed, Controller.
And we also have, have with us, I'm not sure, yes, Mr. Malone did come in, we have Vice Chair of the Board, Jeanne Malone, is with us. In fact, I think we have a full board here today. Michael Murray, Alan Brown, Ann Sefowski, John Palmer, and last but not least, Tanya Laird Lewis. So we do have a full board with us today.
And we appreciate your being here. We appreciate your staff taking the time to be here, and I'll tell you, I also see a lot of the board members at a lot of events in the community, too, so it's nice to see that.
Very supportive. So these items, although the first item, we all want to welcome Tanya to our board. She was just sworn in about an hour ago. Look forward to working with her, so.
Great.
And then the other two items on our agenda were items that you requested. We've prepared a brief update for you on both of our capital projects, so I'm going to ask that Micah give you a brief update, and then we can respond to any questions that you have.
Okay, great. Excellent.
Good morning, President Cannon. Good morning, council members. So, starting with the Beaver Run update, obviously, it's a new replacement school project. Construction documents that include all of the specifications for the new school are currently being finalized. Those documents will be presented to the School Building Commission on August the 21st, then presented for approval to the Board of Education in early September, and finally submitted to the IAC at the state mid-September. The Department of General Services will give us approval to go ahead and proceed with the bidding process at that point in time. The trade contracts will go out for bid in the mid-fall, so that we can try and avoid any potential escalation in costs. And what's, once the bids are in around the middle of November, we'll evaluate in detail the cash flow based upon the funding and determine the guaranteed maximum price at that point. If funding's adequate, we would proceed at that point with contracts, and the construction for Beaver Run would start in the early spring of 2020, with a completion date of June 2022. The move-in to the new school would occur in July and August of 2022, and students would start in the new school in the fall of 2022. If funding is not adequate, when we start the bidding process in the fall of this year, we would just need to evaluate with the School Building Commission what we do and what we have at that point from the state funding side, to see if we can start with construction as slated in the spring of 2020, or if we would need to delay at that point. Beaver Run.
Any questions? Yeah, we hope this gets, we'd like to see this move forward, because I know Beaver Run's been, you know, been in need for quite some time.
That's correct.
And we're so close to getting, I think, you know, all our schools right where they need to be, and I'd like to keep that momentum going. Where is the, what is the process with the state right now on that? Are they just waiting for the county to take the measures?
So as far as the construction documents, we're preparing those, and we'll be submitting those to IAC, so that's right along the timeline there. And then they'll give us approval if we can start with the bidding process at the end of the summer. So at that point, probably, we would just need to take a step back and look at our funding projections for the rest of that year. Once the School Building Commission feels comfortable with where we are, then we would go ahead with the building process, which is for the first two months in the fall.
Okay, great.
I just had breakfast this morning, breakfast meeting with two gentlemen that went to Beaver Run when it was open, and they said they figured that it was time for it to be replaced.
I think so.
So anyway, that's good. Have you had any conversation with the Executive's Office about this project lately?
Not lately, no. Oh, actually, yes. Sorry. Yes. Received a phone call from Mr. Young indicating that there may be some concern with going to the bond market, but we hope those matters are going to be resolved and that we can all move forward.
So that's the last, the last information you have?
That's correct. No. I have not.
I have not, yeah. Yeah, I think it would benefit the county as a whole, not just the Board of Education, but the county as a whole, to do everything within our powers to make sure this happens without, I think, creating too many concerns, just, I think, focusing on moving forward, period, getting done.
We would agree.
Any other questions? We're, it's your list.
That's okay. Mardella, Mardella update.
So, Mardella update. Now, Mardella Project is a renovation and an addition project. Now, Mardella's been identified in the master plan, the Wycomico County Public School Master Plan, as the next major project. That was due to the condition of the school, the reoccurring failing systems in the school, student enrollment, the existing portables. There are nine that exist outside of the overall primary school building, and then also the academic and program needs for the school. In the spring of 2018, a little over a year ago, a kickoff meeting was held between facilities of Wycomico County Public Schools and Mardella Community. Information was gathered in April and May of 2018, with the community meeting occurring on May the 30th of 2018. That began the feasibility study and that whole process. The feasibility study concluded with a community presentation of its findings in January 2019. Becker Morgan completed the study in February and then presented that to the School Building Commission in late February, and at the Board of Education Work Session in March. The Board of Education, based upon the School Building Commission's recommendation, approved of Option 3. There were four options that were outlined in the feasibility study, and Option 3 is a veneration and addition project. Option 3 meets the educational and operational goals within the study, and that was important to the community, and as well as the educational program. It addresses the security concerns and accommodates all functions under one roof, so it brings the portables essentially inside the main building. It was determined to be the most cost-effective and efficient way while improving everything that needed to be done at Mardella while keeping it on the same site, because that was also an important part of the feasibility study as well. Option 3 includes parking and site upgrades, complete building and system upgrades, middle and high school separation, building circulation improvements, renovations to existing classrooms, the music wing and gym areas, in addition to the admin areas and front entrance, and also the addition of a two-story building for the media center, needed classroom space. Like I said, it brings the portable classrooms currently that are outside inside, and the additional academic support spaces. support spaces that are needed as well. And it's also a full ADA upgrade throughout the entire school. So, a full education specification study will be completed this school year, and then Mardella's in the queue for state planning approval in FY 2021 school year.
Any questions? Don, you'll hear me say something.
I am.
Okay.
Um, the resolution before we sat down here was kind of world. I've been struggling from what I read in the Independent last week about the Beaver Run issue. It's in my district, it's Joe's district, Tanya's district, and Michael's. I have a problem when we put kids in the middle of grown-up issues. So, with the world kindness on the agenda, and my wife tells me this all the time, take the higher route. I'm challenging you all to take the higher route. Why am I sitting here telling you this today? Gentlemen, I'm going to be out of the loop for the next four months. They're taking my voice box out, so this is probably the last time you hear me. But I want to be around, and these students are my kids, so I'm challenging you to do the best for this community, for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any other comments? I guess on the agenda, just discuss our next work session, right?
We'll come up with a joint, joint meeting.
Anything else someone would like to comment on off the agenda?
Just, we thank you all for coming, as always, and, and Don, your comments, we wish you the best, and we will do the right thing.
I do, too. I mean, I think we have a strong Board of Education. We have strong leaderships with the superintendent and her staff. And I think, I think so many good things have been happening. We want to see that continue. You know, you, you're very thankful, or I guess that's, that's a term I guess we could use very loosely on the, on the funding, but actually, it's no need for any thanks on that. We're just trying to all do the same thing. I always had reservations when people thanked the government for a grant. I mean, it's their money anyway, right? So, well deserved, and all you did. I would like to thank you, because you created the vision, you created the goals, and you, I think, showed not only the county council, the executive, but the entire county, exactly what can be done if we focus on that. And I think that's where we're headed. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. All right. Thanks again, and thanks, everybody that's in support back there. Glad to see everybody.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 76, 2019, to certify the drainage tax rule to the Director of Finance as requested by the Board of Managers of the Public Drainage Associations. This resolution was introduced on May the 21st, 2019, but was tabled because there was some uncertainty as to whether or not council actually had to formally approve the tax levies for the drainage associations. We did have our attorney look into this matter, and he advised that we should just go ahead and proceed with adopting the tax levies. I can read the tax levies into the record, or that's up to council for each district, or you can just adopt the resolution as written.
I think, I think we could adopt it as is, yeah. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 76, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
That is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. Anyone has any public comments they'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. And I'd like to recognize Delegate Carl Anerton in the room. Carl, good to see you. Excuse me?
Oh, please, yeah. Love to hear from you. Thanks. How y'all doing?
Good.
Good, right? All right. My name's Carl Anerton, Jr. I live in Delmar, and I'm blessed to be a member of the Wycomico House delegation in the Maryland General Assembly. Just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of an update on, I know you've been hearing about the MAC, the situation with MAC, with Meals on Wheels, and, and, and all these different things being said about budget cuts and all this. That, as you know, in 2016, there was a new funding formula established based on per person, so that way, areas with a larger senior population could get the funding they need versus excess funding for areas with a smaller senior population. Now, that number will change every year as we grow older. Then our funded, the funding pendulum will swing back. But for the past four years, MAC had been given a sur, a, not a surplus, but a stipend? Want to call it that? We'll call it that. They were given additional funds to help adjust to the new funding formula, so that way, the reduction in monies wouldn't be felt immediately. We've given them four years to adjust their, their budget, and that appears to have not happened. And so, we've been working with the Budget Secretary, David Brinkley, and the administration on trying to find ways to help now soften this transition, and hoping that MAC will adjust their budget, as we all do in our individual homes when our income fluctuates, and that we can find some geographical disparity monies, hopefully, because we do cover a large area. It's four counties. And I want to applaud the, the county executive for, for stepping up and wanting to help supplement some of this funding, but I think that that should be split four ways between the four counties, instead of just Wycomico County bearing it alone. But we have some time. This, we, according to MAC, we have about five months before this becomes an issue. So, I asked for some time to work through the state to see if we can come up with some creative ways to, to continue allowing MAC to fund at, as their, at their current rate, as they learn to adjust, because the ultimate goal is to make sure that no one is short-changed when it comes to Meals on Wheels. And I think that, that should never be an issue, so we need to just double down and ensure that. But I want, I just wanted to tell you that, again, to thank you all during the legislative session. We had a good session for Wycomico County again, and, you know, I know that the Sunday Deer Hunting Bill that was passed, I, I, it wasn't what we wanted, but it took three years to get what we got. And for me to have our chief opponent for the past three years high-five me as a supporter on the bill this year, I'm going to take that as a win. And then, we can go back next year and ask for more, because that's kind of how that works. So, but it, it was, it was an interesting session, and, you know, with Beaver Run in queue, I understand there may be a little bit of an issue there. We cannot lose that spot, especially with Mardella coming up behind it. Beaver Run, I'm blessed to have that in the district I serve, and so that is very important for me, as all of us. And so, we need to do whatever needs to be done to ensure that. Put little games and stuff aside if that's what it is. If it's not, then let's just hold hands and jump together and get it done. But again, you know, we have major spending coming up in the Kerwin Commission. The first piece of that came through this year, and so, you know, that's something that I think that you, as council members and the executive branch, need to be looking forward long-range to additional education dollars needing to be found, because that's going to be handed down from the state over the next decade. But I think that, you know, funding for our schools and our kids should be our priority, and it has been, and it's going to be even more so. But I know that was a lot real quick, but I understand I only have two minutes. So, I'll, I'll talk to you guys a little later if you don't have any questions. All right?
Thank you, Delegate Anerton.
Sure, absolutely.
I know you and I speak often, and you, you always make sure that you're very accessible, and I appreciate that. I know the council probably appreciates that as well.
Absolutely. No, you guys have been awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none. That concludes public comments. Council comments? Seeing none. Entertained motion to adjourn, so we can go into open work sessions?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session is the Lower Shore Work Alliance. Mr. Pageum? There they are.
May we come forward?
Please do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We thank the council for taking the time to allow us to go over a little bit of business that needs to be attended to. I'm Greg Pageum, the Executive Director of the Tri-County Council for the World Eastern Shore of Maryland. And this is Becca Webster. She is the Director of the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. And what we wanted to do is just briefly update you on how the Workforce Investment Acts transition to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014 affects board composition and other services.
Mr. Pageum, if you could speak into the mic.
Should I repeat that? All right. My name is Greg Pageum. I'm the Executive Director for the Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore of Maryland. This is Becca Webster. She is our Director of the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance, and we thank you for allowing, for allowing us to come before you today to just update you on how the Workforce Investment Acts transition to the Workforce and Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014 affects board composition and other services. So, if I may turn it over to Ms. Webster.
Thank you. The handout that I just gave you goes over the purposes of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, so that's something that you can, of course, review at your leisure. The second part of that is board membership, which is what I'm going to talk about. And then, just a short statement about what the commitment for board members is, so that you can refer to that if you need to. So, under the, we call it WEOWA, some people call it YOWA, but WEOWA, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, lists 13 functions of the board in the law. So, so there's a pretty big responsibility for the board and what they're, what they're to do. But it's all about workforce development, working with employers, working with job seekers, to fill the needs in the community for, for workforce. Membership on the, the workforce board, 51% of our board needs to be business members, and the way that we have that set up on our, in our workforce area, which is all three counties, Somerset, Wester, Wycomico, is five members of the board from each county are business members. So, there's 15 business members, five come from Wycomico. The purpose is for the board to be business-led, so that they can tell us what's going on in industry, what they project the job openings to be, what skills those folks need to have to be able to fill those jobs, so that we can then do our job and prepare job seekers. The membership for businesses, this is what we, we really wanted to talk about today and get into detail about, is that to be a business representative of the board, we're looking for folks that have optimum policymaking and hiring authority. So, that's the biggest thing, and that is listed on your handout, the four things that are listed there in the center of the page for board membership. But really, we're looking for folks that have, have their finger on the pulse of what's going on, and that, that do have hiring authority, because they are the ones that are then obviously more able to tell us what the job seekers, what, what the quality of the job seeker, the skill of the job seeker needs to be. We're looking for, for folks from areas that are in-demand industry sectors. Obviously, we want to know where growth is, not where, where decline is. We're looking for folks that, within their own organizations, within their own businesses, are training their, their folks to continue to be good workers, and then, of course, are appointed by the, the council. For Wycomico County, we do have one member, which I'll be writing to Laura about, who's unable to attend because there's a conflict on the date of, of the meeting. So, you do have currently five, the five seats on the board are full, but we are going to request replacement for one member. Unfortunately, she's got, as I said, a conflict. Meetings are held four times a year, so they're quarterly meetings, and they, usually, we have a guest speaker. We have some voting items, obviously, very similar to what you all do here, budget approvals, strategic plans, selection of providers for any of our services. We've got officers and, and some internal policies that, that the board, that's kind of a general idea of what, what a board meeting usually looks like. Our challenges are, which is why we've come to talk to you today, is keeping those seats filled. We have, as, as I said, we have one member who, you know, has a conflict. Then, there's almost, even though the terms are four years, there's almost a constant churn of, of trying to keep the, the appointments up to date and, and the seats filled. So, each county is almost always missing at least one or two members, and that puts our board out of compliance. And then, we do have certification this year, which was why it was particularly important for us to come and kind of give you a little overview of, of when you appoint folks, the types of folks that we're looking for. Did you have something you wanted to add, Greg?
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
It's, it's very important, not just for compliance, but also to make sure that job providers are tuned in to the workforce. This allows the workforce, the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance and its board, to do its job and to help employers and the private sector. I would stress that.
Can we answer any questions for you?
Is there any way that we can help you? I mean, from whatever your...
So, so my ask today is going to be that when I send in the letter to replace the one member, that, that we are able to fill that seat pretty quickly. And then, my question to you is, do you prefer for us to try to identify a member, or do you prefer to have control over that and identify that person that you want to appoint on your own?
I don't think we need to micromanage what, what...
Awesome.
More qualified than we would make that so.
Perfect. So, we, we do have that, and, you know, the different counties, like, prefer to have that handled differently, but our board has had some discussions about having a little bit more control over that, because it does tell us if we, if we identify priority industries, if we're able to come to you and say, we've identified this as a priority industry, and this person, essentially gone through the recruitment process for this person, could you please approve this person? If that works for you guys, that works for us.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd rather it come from you.
Yeah. Okay.
How's your liaison with the Chamber of Commerce?
I have a, a staff person who's doing a little bit more legwork with that. We're, we're planning, right now, I don't know if you've heard, that we are planning a business summit in August. I mean, have been working with Mr. Chambers there, so...
Yeah, and I think also, and Greg, you're a member of Greater Salisbury, and every person that really meets the definition, because they have to be CEOs or heads of companies to be a member.
Correct.
So, they're the ones doing the hiring, so...
That, that's true. That's a, that's a, that's a source, I believe.
Yeah. No, no one to sit next to you at the next lunch meeting, because they'll be afraid you're going to ask them.
And Becca, Becca and I will confer on that and look at some names, if the council is fine with that.
I, I attended a census committee meeting yesterday, and they were talking about how with the, with the new census that's coming out, that they're also going to be looking for people to try to accomplish that goal, to make sure we get enough people out throughout Wycomico County. So, it may benefit you to contact them.
So, we have job fairs in, actually, at the American Job Center for the census takers.
Oh, you do?
We do, yeah. So, we're constantly, it's, it's not through our organization, but we are involved in that.
Great.
Recruitment, and sounds like they're good jobs.
I think so.
The federal census people, too, they have a representative here in the region. And I'm sorry, I cannot think of the young lady's name.
Jillian?
Yes, that's it.
I can, I have 24-hour recalls, so you're lucky.
So, we are connected to that. So, those are examples of things that we're, we try to stay connected with.
Good.
Throughout our network. It doesn't necessarily need to be us, but through that network.
When she made that comment, I, the first thing I thought was, well, that may be, I knew we were meeting with you today, so I thought, maybe that could be worth, worth discussing.
They've done some job fairs, you know, onsite interviewing with us. We've got it listed in our job listings through the Maryland Workforce Exchange. And then, I've seen there also been at the Delmar Library and some other places. So, hopefully, they'll, they'll get enough people, because it sounds like they need a lot.
Well, Mr. President, you mentioned interaction with the Chamber of Commerce, too. I'm in contact a lot with the Chamber of Commerce, and I'll bring this issue up again. In fact, I'll probably be in contact with Bill Chambers today regarding another matter, so...
Okay. All right. Great. Any other questions?
Oh.
Yes, Josh?
I'll add on that, Mr. Pageum, Greg's done a great job with taking over after Mike. We serve on the Royal Maryland Council together, and Mike, you know, he's a fantastic person who, for a long time, ran it. And so, I'm, I'm happy to see how things are developing.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. I've been in this position for about six months, and as soon as the, the grant period closes out and it began our new fiscal year, there's some things that, that I would like to do. I'm already setting the stage for that. A region-wide marketing plan that I've decided that the Tri-County Council will just take the reins on.
Okay.
So...
Excellent.
Excited about it.
We'll see you this Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webster. Next item we have on the agenda is the land preservation easement application. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you, Laura?
Fine.
You are sitting in for Lori Carter, I assume?
I am.
Great.
This is, has been in the past, an every-other-year visit for us, and with the state's budgeting for the past two years, that we are, looks like for a while anyway, back on an annual cycle with the land preservation easement applications. And for the first time in a very long time, I only have one new application this year. And it is the...
I was just curious with that, because I remember in the past, it was always such a backlog with applicants, when I saw that.
I had a small list of folks that wanted an application, and when I sent them out, several of them were not returned. Now, this is a new application. I do have a couple of other applications to send in that are repeats that haven't been funded, but this is the only new one that I have this time. And it is for a farm out near Hebron on Ocean Gateway that has been reviewed by the Ag Advisory Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it exceeds the minimum land area of fifty acres, and it meets or exceeds the minimum soils criteria that the state requires, and it meets the requirements of the program as recommended by the county's comprehensive plan for its location. What we've done in the past with new applications is had the council review them at a public hearing, so that we notified adjoining property owners that this request was being made, and then, a resolution is included with the package to go to the MOUTH program.
Okay.
So I guess today, we're here to ask you to let us proceed with scheduling it at a public hearing, so we can get it on a regular agenda.
Okay. Any questions from council? Bill?
I've got a question. It's not really related directly to this. I mean, I'm fine with this, and I think we should definitely add this one and have perceived with a public hearing, but has the MOUTH folks done anything to address the impervious surface issue? Because we were having the issue with, for example, which, you know, a lot of people don't realize, but, you know, especially with the older MOUTH easements, for example, you know, you can do a large-scale poultry operation on a land preservation easement, and we've had that happen in our county.
They have not addressed that. There are a few easements in the county where there are restrictions on that, but those were applications that, where the easement was purchased partially with federal farm and ranch land funds at the time that the state was acquiring those funds. And if they were purchased with that money, because of the FF RP requirements, there are impervious surface restrictions, but otherwise, MOUTH has not done anything else.
Yeah, I'm just surprised they haven't, I mean, it's, you know, if you can't develop, you can't develop.
Well, it does take, when we do, when a landowner does that, it does take land out of production, but that is still an agricultural operation, even though it takes the land out of actual cultivation. It's an agricultural operation, so it meets MOUTH's criteria.
Any other questions? I think, I don't think there's really, I mean, I could ask if there's a consensus. I'm assuming the council's fine with you moving forward on this.
Yes.
Sure. Okay?
All right.
All right, Laura. Thank you.
We'll work, get it scheduled.
Yeah, see what you can schedule with Laura?
Yeah. I was just going to suggest we can have that public hearing on July the sixteenth, because it has to be advertised two times at ten a.m.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda is the quarterly stormwater management discussion. Mr. Baker, how are you this morning?
Doing well, how are you all?
Doing great.
Good morning. Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the County.
Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
So I believe you all were forwarded a copy of some proposed legislation that covers the illicit discharge detection and elimination portion of the county's municipal separate storm sewer system permit, commonly referred to as MS four. What this legislation does is it outlines what types of, identifies what we consider pollutant in storm water. It allows us to go onto private property and inspect storm water outfalls. It provides for the enforcement of preventing pollution from entering our storm drains, and it is part of a requirement that the MS four permit says we have to put this in place in order to meet what's called one of our minimum control measures as part of the larger permit. What we did was we took what, basically what Salisbury had done, which had already been approved by the Maryland Department of the Environment and the EPA, modified it as best we could on the public work side, and have sent that over to legal for further tweaking to figure out, okay, how do we incorporate this language into, or where do we incorporate this language into our current charter? But what you have before you is kind of the meat and potatoes of it. Some of the numbering and chapter numbers might change, but for the most part, the language that they've incorporated is what we would like to do. We don't want to reinvent the wheel, especially if it's something that MDE and EPA have already approved. So that's our thoughts, and that's what you have before you.
How does this play into how we're trying to address the stormwater issue as a whole in the county, and how we've been going through that over the last couple of years? I'm wondering how this comes into play with that.
Well, the, you know, the MS four permit is centered around storm water, storm water drainage. What we are trying to do is look at projects that will kind of tag-team all of the issues, address drainage problems, address storm water management, address the MS four permit. Upcoming modifications to the watershed improvement plan, the WIP projects, are being tied to the MS four as well. And again, this is just part of the legislation that's required from the MS four permit. It's my understanding that there is a request for an update on proposed legislation, so that's what we've provided.
Well, there's a request for a report on the quarterly stormwater management discussion that we've been having on a quarterly basis. We are aware of the fact that you've been instructed that you are not to discuss that with us, though I think it's an important matter for all the citizens of Wacomiko County, because it is a county issue, and the council has taken that on. But, you know, we're here to discuss this resolution, so that's what we're here to discuss, I guess. Any questions from anybody?
I would like to add, if you go to the, what is the fourth page or the third page of the proposed chapter, under prohibited discharges into the system, I think this touches on a lot of the issues Dallas has been presenting over the years in terms of people dumping things in the ditches. This is an enforcement mechanism. For example, item number five, that has prohibited any garbage, rubbish, or other waste. Number seven, any yard waste that has been moved or gathered by a person. So I think as you read through this, you're going to see that some of the common issues Dallas has presented is being addressed with this proposed. So while it is a requirement for the MS four permit, I think this will also assist public works and codes in terms of how to address some of the flooding, nuisance flooding caused by, I'll say, people who have blocked ditches or dumped things in ditches. So I do see a connection with this.
I interrupt you a little bit. You're doing these numbers. Number nine, wastewater from commercial power washer or from the washing or other cleaning of a building exterior, contains soap detergent, grease solvent, or any, I mean, does that mean that anybody power washing a building cannot use any kind of cleaner to do that with? Does that eliminate power washing a house?
This is the direction MDE and the EPA want us to go. So, yes.
Is that one of their laws, a state law? Is that a state law now?
They're trying to prevent the, so in the terms of power washing, you know, it doesn't prevent people from power washing their houses, doesn't prevent them from commercial entities from power washing their people's homes. What it does do is says, okay, if you're going to power wash someone's house, and it's draining to a county-owned storm drain, you have to take measures to capture that storm water back, or capture that runoff back, so it doesn't enter the storm drain. So that can be accomplished a couple ways. If it just, the water is draining off to somebody's yard and infiltrates into the ground, great. I mean, typically, what you would probably see is that pathway being, I'm power washing next to your house, it's hitting your driveway, it's going down your driveway into the street, into the storm drain. So what you could potentially do is just put down, they have, they look like giant filled-up socks, basically, that you can put across the driveway to absorb that water backup, so it's, you know, you're taking steps to capture and retain the, any chemicals that might be entering into the storm water system.
We haven't had this that long to review, Dallas or Weston. What I would suggest that we do is we hold a work session on this. I mean, if it's going to be a, if it's going to be a serious resolution, which I assume it is, that I think it would probably benefit everyone to have a little more time to be able to prepare and to look at it, read it in advance. And then, we could schedule another work session. I think that we could tie that work session into the quarterly work sessions, because either way, it's all part of the same process that we're trying to resolve. And I'd like to see us doing it, instead of piecemealing it out by resolution or something else like that, I'd like to decide, you know, to discuss it as a whole with everything else that we've had a lot of good work on over the last year, because you've been doing excellent work over the last year.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I mean, it's been really good, and I'm just hoping to see how far we're going, and, you know, to me, we're at that stage where I think some final implementations are in place, and we'd just like to know where that is for the benefit of the county as a whole. So what we'll do is we'll put this on the schedule. I don't know what time or how, how much more you have to fine-tune this, but we'll put this on a work schedule for another work session when the council's had time to review it, and if we can go over it more in-depth, if that works for you.
Dallas, do you have any time parameters that we have to be working under?
So the first year's work plan has to be in place by, I believe, October of this year, so I'd like to have this approved and in place by October, so when we do our first year's annual report, we can check that box off. The second year is when we have to actually start going out and doing these inspections. So I hate waiting until the last minute. If I've got this thing approved before October, then October one rolls around, that starts my year ticking to go out and inspect these outfalls, which we have to do twenty percent of the outfalls along the river, or a hundred, or twenty percent or up to one hundred outfalls. So, you know, that's a significant amount to go out and try to inspect, and if I can get started in October, it's a lot easier to inspect these things in the wintertime, when the vegetation's not growing, you can find them, you're not getting swamp of ticks and mosquitoes and all that other fun stuff. So I'd love to hit the ground running in the late fall and through the winter to get these inspections done.
Okay. So if they're violating the law, they need to do it when there's ticks?
No, no, it's, you know, a lot of the early work on this is going to be, when they go out and inspect these locations, they're also going to be getting GPS positions of where they're at. Right now, the maps that we have are, all of these outfall locations are all based on, off of our ASBILs, but it's a lot easier to go out and find, you know, where the locations are at, we can clear some of the vegetation around it, that type of thing, so...
Mr. Cannon, I believe, I'll talk loud, I don't have a mic, this will have to be done as an ordinance, not as a resolution. So I'll have to go through two readings in public hearing.
All right.
So you actually probably need to be, work session was doing is fairly soon, because by the time we do two public hearings, and we'll find ourselves to September real quick.
Yep. Well, like I said, now that we have this document with us, I'm assuming it will be put into a PDF file, so we can also review it, and then, we can have, I think, a substantial work session in the very near future. Right? You know, most of this is probably already in the Maryland law, right?
I imagine it's, a lot of it's been incorporated from other counties in the state, yeah, from the phase one.
The state law things, you know, that you can't, you can't do, so...
Or federal Clean Water Act.
Yeah, Clean Water Act, state, whatever. Is this something that the state is basically saying we have to do?
Yeah. Yeah, it is a requirement in the permit. In fact, what it specifically says is that, I've got the flags here. One of the requirements, establish and document legal means for gaining access to private property to investigate and eliminate illicit discharges, example ordinances, and such and such. So again, and then, there's a whole appendix related specifically to this that I'm not going to, I've got four pages to you. But, you know, it's already passed through Salisbury. It's something that citizens are familiar with. This isn't, you know, something that we're coming out of left field, so again, don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dallas. Next item we have on the agenda is the honorary street signs. And I actually put together a piece recently, so that I know there were some issues. Part of the concerns were the design of the sign. This isn't the end-all of everything, but I thought at least it wouldn't hurt to try to see if there could be some type of a proposal of styles, because that's one of the five issues, I think, that was still pending with the county. So you have that, but let's go through, if we could, items one through five. The cost of the sign should be set yearly by the roads department, et cetera. I believe when we first discussed this, it was stated that the cost was rather insignificant, and it wasn't really, you know, a deal breaker. But that being the case, how are you gentlemen recommending that we include the cost of the sign if we do that? Are we doing that with the application fee, or what are your thoughts?
I would say what we could do is, if we would, the application would say, where are the limits of where we want to establish this road is at? So if somebody said, "Well, I want to rename, I want to give an honorary to Jersey Road", that's pretty long. So what limits? Are we talking all of Jersey or certain sections? Within those sections, we would go out and quantify how many signs are on that road to come up with an estimate, and then provide that back to whoever requested it. Because one of the factors in playing into the significance or non-significance of the cost is if we need to put in a new pole. To establish all of the signs shown, especially like in this picture, we would need a nine-foot pole, which we don't typically install out there, so we'd have to replace the pole. That's where about seventy percent of the cost, well, seventy dollars comes from to replace the pole, thirty bucks for the sign. So we could go out and identify which places need new poles, and then, of course, they'd all need signs as well, and come up back with a cost estimate.
See, I mean, I thought we were going to create one sign to dedicate that individual, and that one sign would be in, I guess, at some location on that road that was, you know, high visibility.
Okay.
I wasn't thinking that there were going to be like eight or nine of these signs along the length of that road.
You're thinking like when you have on the bypass, and it's dedicated to Norm Conroy or Dan Chrisfield, Chrisfield Howie dedicated to Donnie Drew, or that type of honorary.
Sure.
Okay. That wasn't my understanding, but certainly, we can look at revising if that's the...
Yeah, because I'm confused, too. I was thinking the same thing.
You're trying to dedicate a whole street. Most dedications are like a, like a section, not the whole, like Jersey Road, just a little section, and maybe you could use the streets that are in the area where you want to dedicate, instead of doing the whole street.
I guess that is the issue, too. I mean, if somebody wants to dedicate a sign to, in honor of someone, do they need guidelines as to what the county is going to require? um, I, do they need guidelines as to what the county is going to request? Um, I've lost track as to how, what the city does. Of course, the city has smaller streets as well. They don't have these roads that can, can go on for a couple miles.
Well, one of the, one of the biggest examples would be East River Shore Drive, which is Pete Cooper Way, lots of cross streets.
Right.
So, Pete Cooper's name is, is along all of those. Um, the, one, one of the challenges with, uh, the one sign at kind of an entryway is the, uh, the lack of right-of-way available. I mean, if we're out in the middle of the county, we probably, we've got right-of-way on the side of the road. But if you're talking someplace down, say Riverside Drive, for example, you know, places like that, we own to where the edge of pave is, and then trying to find a spot to dedicate a certain corridor of that area to an individual with one large sign, we just lack the real estate to put that sign up. So, it would limit where you can place them, the larger signs. Oh, which doesn't say that it's not an option. Maybe there, maybe there's an option of doing one for the larger sign, or if the person's interested in doing the, these smaller signs, if, if that's something the county wants to pursue. It doesn't have to be one or the other. It can be, it could be both and let the people pick, whatever.
How many different, if you take this sign here, how many different kinds of ro- how many different kinds of road signs do you have? Uh, as far as poles go now? I mean, is, I know one's pretty standard, the square pole with the holes in it.
Yeah.
But what I was wondering, you know, instead of having to replace a pole, complete pole, can't you make the signs fit on the pole with a different attachment mechanism? Like, like that one?
Like an extender.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I can certainly check to see if they have something, I mean, that would, that would fit on top of it.
Yeah. I mean, I s- I see with these, these, I, I went out and looked at some of them. I seen, uh, some of these square poles, if you had the sign, all you would need is like a
Clip.
An extender to stick and then just drop it in the top of the sign and it'd stay there, you know?
I can find out.
Till somebody hits it with a clip.
That would, that would drop the cost significantly.
Yeah, that would drop your cost. And, and, and if not, you, could you bolt, bolt, bolt it on to the side underneath, you know? But as far as, uh, running it down a five-mile road, I think that's kinda ridiculous to put it on every, every road that connects to that, don't you? I mean, is that what you were planning on doing?
That, that was my understanding of the direction that we wanted to go. I, I can certainly work up whatever's needed. If we want one large sign, or if we want, you know, place these on every other street or every major road, I, uh, there's.
I think this is gonna be, unfortunately, to be something so simple, it's gonna end up being a lot more complicated than what we thought we were gonna start with.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think, I mean, but like, the policy, it's, it's honorary street sign policies, so, yeah, it's always, I mean, street signs, which, you know, it's normally like, it's kinda seen in this picture.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it would just be, uh, you know, the same size as a typical street sign that honors someone, not, uh, something large or whatever, just, you know, a street sign.
Well, if somebody, if, if the applicant's paying for this, and say they wanted to do, um, Naylor Mill Road, who was probably got six or seven intersections, how many intersections Naylor Mill got? Ten, twelve?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
They're not gonna wanna be paying a thousand or twelve hundred dollars to put up signs at every intersection, I wouldn't think.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that, I think the price is gonna simplify it a little bit more for you, too.
But if, I guess if you don't do the whole road, you could theoretically have, well, this section is, is named after somebody, and that, I don't, I don't know.
Well, it brings up a good point. I mean, that might be what, what it depends on, Joe. I mean, if people do wanna go to the extent of paying for six signs, and that the cost is covered, then the county would put up six signs. And we could put restrictions, say, three signs only. But I mean, um, if the individual wants to pay for that number, or if the group or whoever it might be wants to pay for that number of signs, it doesn't hurt the count, the county to put those, uh, to put them there.
Okay.
That, that's, I mean, that's a good point. It's, it's kind of a wash for the county.
Yeah.
So, so the degree of the dedication, as far as they wanna take it, if they wanna do fifteen signs on a ten-mile road, so be it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think that would, that would
Sure.
That would certainly resolve that one. Uh, the, the second thing is, let's say they only wanna put it on, they only put up one, they only wanna, you know, pay for one sign. Who decides what intersection that, where that might go?
That person.
Uh, yeah, I would think that that person would.
Person making a request.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that, that brings up another issue. Okay, they only wanna do one sign on Naylor Mill Road, but somebody else wants to do a sign down the road on Naylor Mill Road with a different name. So, what do you do there?
Well, I think we, we, just one dedication per road, period. If someone gets, you know, if someone has it, uh.
Gets there first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, or say one dedication per road, per five miles. I mean, we have some, some roads that are fairly long.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, i- i- if you're driving up and down thirteen, that road's dedicated to probably about ten different people from Dover down to Temperanceville, um, and of course, we're crossing state boundaries. But I mean, even along fifty, it, it, it's dedicated to multiple people depending where you're at. So, we establish, say, within a five-mile limit, no more than one dedication.
Does that sound like a solution there?
It's fine.
Sure.
Okay. Let's go, we could do that. And keep in mind, when, if we hit any bump in the road, we can always amend these.
Mm-hmm.
We can change these if, you know, someone.
I'm sure it won't be the last week.
Yeah, somebody comes to us with a real practical, uh,
Not many here remember the changing of the Nanticoke to Quantico Road issue thirty, was that thirty years ago, Bill, something like that, when they did that?
So, um,
Pretty turmoil.
Did we, did we decide that the cost of the sign would be, um, would be taken on by whoever, uh, whoever the applicant is, correct?
I, I'd written in, the first three are free, and then the rest is, was that what, was this hearing? No?
Never said that.
No? Okay, okay, never mind.
So, uh, have you?
They pay for what they use.
Pay for what they use.
All right, all right. And I don't think we would establish the cost in the resolution. I think that's something that, that you all will have to define later. And, um, I guess, just as we do some, we, we approve some fees with the Wreckin' Parks, so maybe we would be approving that, that fee structure. I don't know. We'll have to work on that, okay?
I think we can develop an application.
I think whatever you come up with will be, I think we'll probably find to be fair. Um, the second issue is the size of the sh- sign should only be that of a normal street sign, not the over, not a large sign. I, I agree. I think what, what Wayne brought in the other day was so huge.
So, so real quick, that actually is a real-size sign. Our, our, that is the maximum size we go to is a four-foot sign. If they want fourteen characters on that sign, that's the size of what it's gonna look like. I mean, Sample Drive was, you know, this small and a sign that big. But, you know, our, our, our street signs, even when, when you're driving by them at a relative high speed, and they look smaller, but, you know, signs are typically, you know, two and a half, three foot, and, and again, on some of the larger, it's four foot big. So, it, that, we will tailor the size of the sign to, to meet the characters. But if they want fourteen characters, they're gonna get a four-foot wide sign, or four-foot long sign, sorry.
Uh, I, I would like to suggest that we create a maximum so that all of these are gonna be the same size, that we don't have to sit there and have like, you know, have you guys making a whole different person for a whole lot of different types of sizes.
Or, or not to exceed.
Yeah.
Irregular song.
Yeah.
It's gonna be tough unless your name's Lou and, you know, you got fifteen letters in your name.
Yeah.
You're gonna tell somebody they can't have a sign because their name's too long.
Uh, they limit license plates in terms of what you can put on there. Um, you know, I think of the former warden as a good example. If we had George Calamarakis Parkway, uh, we would need three signs uh, to, to fit it all. But, um, I, I think we could do not to exceed and play it by ear.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Dallas can let us know what that limit is.
Okay. All right. Um, third thing was, uh, how long the sign would be there?
I'll say my only concern is who's keeping track of, say, if it's a ten-year or twenty-year period, and when Public Works goes to remove those signs after a ten-year period, they, you know, it could upset that family. So, we, we need to make it clear that whatever, whatever the timeframe is, um, that if they wish to renew it, they can. Maybe, maybe there's a competing name that wants to go for it for the next ten years. Um, I don't know. I, I guess my concern with that was who's tracking it, and then, um, if there may be any political blowback when they go to remove them at that timeframe.
Now, definitely, I'm pointing Dallas, yeah.
Yeah, you guys, you guys would have to keep track of that. You guys would have to keep track.
Or your, or your office would have to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I.
The county, I mean, we're not gonna track it.
No, I, I, I can imagine just creating a spreadsheet to know what, what streets honoraries are up and when they were installed.
Right? Wouldn't you just track the invoice? When the payment is made, it goes through finance, however it might be done.
Yeah, I mean, well, there would be also be a resolution for, uh, naming the sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, that would be, that would start the, the ten-year.
That's, that's a good point. Any timeframe, gentlemen?
I suggested twenty last time, just 'cause it feels like a, it's a generation, it feels long enough to recognize someone's legacy or the impact. Ten years seems kinda short to me, but I don't have a strong feelings.
One, one, one thing from the technical side, the stickers that are on here are only expected to last about ten years. The road name self, the road name sign itself is, would last the twenty. But, um, we don't have the ability to, to, to make that elaborate seal appear on, as an integral part of the sign. It's a, it's a separate sticker that we apply, and sticker's probably gonna wear out after about ten years. So, we just, we'll just have to go through and slap some more stickers on, but.
If it's the same sticker, right, it's the seal?
What timeframe, ten, fifteen, twenty? I think ten's too short.
Twenty.
I do.
Okay.
Twenty.
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 Then the, uh, another item was that the, um, you know, um, when this is presented, whether or not the individual, um, whether or not the person that's being recognized, whether they are still alive, whether it can only be someone who's passed away. I can understand why they say, you know, once someone's passed away, but then again, also, I think it's nice to be able to present that while that person's still there.
Yeah.
I think that means a lot. So, you know.
S- s- so.
Let them appreciate it, you know?
Enjoy it.
So, here's what you might run into if you do it with people that's still alive. You're gonna have people, you know, put their own up.
That's really true, Joe. I mean, you could have the Joe Holloway sign up tomorrow.
Yeah.
You really could.
And that, I think you're gonna find that, maybe not waiting until two years after they've passed, but at least until they've passed. Because I think what you're gonna, if, if you do this, at any, at any time, anybody can, how are you gonna turn somebody down?
Yeah, but, you know, um.
I'd push back on that. I, 'cause I don't think there's gonna be a lot of folks. It's, usually it's bureaucratic, so a lot of people are not gonna quite know how to do it. I mean, you're, you're right. You could definitely get somebody, you could come out of, you know, left field and, and could do that. But generally, it's gonna be someone who's got a, a good momentum behind them, you know, church group or civic group or something, uh, that would prob- I would imagine. But then again, I, I'm always surprised, man.
And it is something that's gonna have to be approved as well. It's not as if anybody can just send it in to Dallas and say, get, put my sign up tomorrow.
Now, you're gonna disapprove it.
I'll take that.
What reason are you gonna disapprove it?
Well, they're gonna have to follow the criteria that, that we've established.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
I think the Bob Cook example is a good one.
Yeah.
I think it really is, so.
That's a good example.
Yeah.
Why, too, that there's a lot of examples not to do that, I think. There'd be a lot more examples not to do it than there is to do it.
The Joe Holloway wants a good example, too.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want a road sign, that's for sure.
You, you think that would pass through the council? So, the criteria, I think, is, is stringent enough where I believe, uh, whoever's name might be put forward would be, I think would be justifiable, whether they're still here today or whether they've passed on. And I'd like to leave it with that option. Again, I said, we can always amend it later. But, um, there are enough good reasons, I think, to try to allow it and hope that it doesn't backfire on us.
This, I think you're gonna see a lot of people coming in wanting their name of their family on that road.
Mm-hmm.
If it does, yeah, we'll have to fix it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, then we have, um, I think that's about it. Any other questions from council members? Um, any questions that you gentlemen have that you've?
Do, well, do we establish the color? I went up, someone was watching the.
Not yet.
Okay.
We haven't. Um, I'm, I'm just saying, overall, as far as issues and structure, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully, we got it, hopefully, we're far enough there. That's good. Um, now, the only other thing we have are sign. We have colors, we have anything else like that. Um, and it's gonna depend on what the council wants to do. This is a graphic that was, that, that I just simply generated. Um, I, actually, I saw it on TV in a town in, um, a similar one in a town in, uh, Carolinas where they, they just happen to be showing that the streets, and they showed these signs. I'm like, oh, look, there's an honorary sign up there. So, I kind of grabbed something and tried to make something similar to that. But this is definitely not, you know.
I think this is perfect.
One, one thing I'd say with the, with the coloring is to just make sure that it, it's not confused with the nine eleven address sign. That was one of the thought processes behind the, the gold on black was that it, you know, the, the county's street signs for, for nine eleven addresses are is black on white for the city, it's white on green. You wanna stay away, that way there's no confusion when people are looking for the, the street, what that, what that street is called.
Okay. That, that was the purpose of the, the decorative border, to sort of let you know immediately that this is not the normal sign. It's, it's, it's probably different. But, I mean, what I, um, I mean, I'd say what I can do, we can reverse these colors. It's, it's really a simple process. Um, what is the council, what are y'all, what are y'all looking for as far as you, either white and black or black and white, or white on gold, gold on white?
I like what he said, you're not gonna stay away from black and white, 'cause you confuse people.
Try to reverse it?
Well, not even reverse it, get away from black and white, 'cause you're confusing with the normal sign. Because like he said, most people look for a white and black sign as being in the county, and green and white for the city. If you put that, like you got here, Smithway over the top, Naylor Mill, somebody might, out of town, might say, oh, this is Smithway, it's not Naylor Mill, because it's white.
Or, or worse, a nine-one-one call comes in and.
That's, that's, this is my issue with this whole thing.
Now, you know, you, in terms of M U T C D, white on blue is what's used for your informational, you know, but when, when you're driving down the bypass and you see those logo signs for food, lodging, gas, that language is white on blue, um, which is a common for, I mean, it doesn't really, yeah, for informational signs, that's a possibility. Um, you know.
Uh, can we do a different typeface? Is there a different, you know, I'm assuming that, this is a different typeface in Smithway, different.
That typeface was picked because it was the closest typeface to the Combe County typeface.
I really like the, the way it is. I don't think people would be confused, but I also, I prefer others.
Well, again, I mean, how about if I, I can just bring in like multiple variations of colors if y'all want that stuff? It's gonna be our decision.
The, 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 which, thinking aloud here, the flag is yellow on blue for Combe County. You know? I, I don't know, just, again, just.
All right. That's two selections, white on blue, yellow on blue. All right, we'll, we'll just put together about eight or nine different color schemes, okay? Sorry, council, is it?
Or three or four.
Three or four, I guess.
All right. All right. Uh, any other, any other questions on it? How close are we, do you think, uh, Mrs. Hurley, to getting this into some real structured element? 'Cause I don't think the color necessarily has to be in the resolution. Could we have this resolution ready? And do we have to go through a public hearing process? What would be, what would entail?
It doesn't require a public hearing process, but if you wanna have a public hearing, you can certainly do that. Um, I can, you know, based on the feedback we got today, we can incorporate those changes into the policy. And if you don't want to have the colors inserted, um, we can bring it back in final form at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think a public hearing would be good, 'cause again, the public, I mean, have some really interesting thoughts on where, what we missed completely. And not to, not to prolong it, but I think that would be important.
Okay.
All right. So, we'll get it in, we'll get it in written form and everything?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Anything else, any other questions? All right, gentlemen?
All right, thank you.
Very much. Gotta find it where I left off. The, uh, next item on the, uh, agenda for, uh, okay, we're, we're ready for lunch.
Yeah.
Can we, can we call them, see if we can get them here a little bit earlier?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. Entertained a motion to adjourn? Uh, well, not a motion to adjourn. We're gonna take a, a half-hour recess. It's a little before twelve right now. They're supposed to come in at one. We'll take a half-hour recess. If not, it'd have to be an hour, depending on what their availability is.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're recommitting to the Wycomico County Council in Legislative Session two thousand nineteen twelve for June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. The, uh, final item on the, uh, work session is, uh, discussion with the, um, prospective, um, county council representative for District Two. And, uh, Julie, well, you can tell the public who you are, or just make sure you have a mic and all that stuff when you, when you talk, okay?
Um, good afternoon, my name is Julie Bruington. I know you all for many years. Um, I've been involved in this community for, uh, well over a decade in terms of community involvement, trying to help the way that I see best and political involvement as well. Um, as you well know, I ran for, uh, county council at large, um, last year and, uh, lost to Mr. McCain. Um, I did not intend to be here today. Actually, it wasn't my, it wasn't my intention to apply for, um, this, this position after last year. I, uh, had a lot of people approach me and ask me to, to do so. Um, and it gave me pause for thought, but still was a little bit reluctant. Then I, I took a look at District Two and, and the voting in District Two, and the votes that I got were pretty impressive. And I felt that if we were to honor, um, the citizens the best way we could and look at continuity of the council and someone who could be reelected, um, I felt compelled to offer up my services. Um, I will serve if this county chooses me. I will happily and dedicate, to dedicate myself to do the best for this county. I think you all know me well enough to understand, um, my positions. Um, I certainly have, uh, respect and admiration for all of you that have chosen to offer yourself to the public. There's not many people that know better than I that that is a, a difficult thing. So I greatly admire, uh, your dedication to the county. Uh, I believe everybody here is, uh, here for the right reason, and, and so am I. And so if you choose to, um, have me join you, um, I will happily serve. If not, that is fine as well.
We appreciate you putting your name forward very much. Um, any questions from anyone, Josh?
Yeah. First of all, y'all was looking up your, your address. Are you different, are you still the same address you've had before, or is this a different?
Okay, so I have moved to Eden, to Harkenworth Road, which is my primary address, which is also recorded at the Board of Elections.
And you're across from Pirate's Wharf?
I am in between, um, Green Hill and the Yacht Club.
Oh, that's great.
On, um, this side. So I have beautiful sunsets there. I'm renovating the property, it is my, um, full-time property, I'm going through, you know, some transitions in life, and I'll be selling the other property.
I just wanted to start it off with, uh, just a basic question of, if chosen, what's your top three priorities?
Main concern is to make sure that this county is affordable for the residents that live here. We want the best quality of life, we do want the best education we can offer. But we also need to make sure we are not taxing people out of this community. That's number one. Number two, um, economic development is something that is, uh, big concern for me, it has personally touched me, it's touched a lot of people there. Very limited, limited opportunities on the shore, and I'd like to investigate how we can bring more industry here and better jobs. And, um, third is, you know, quality of life. Um, you know, the things that, uh, make this county so beautiful and, um, enjoyable and, uh, you know, the, the natural resources that we have here and protecting our waterways and so forth, um, are important to me. I live right on the river. Um, so those would be my three top priorities.
Julie, we have listed questions here, by the way, these aren't, are personal questions or anything, we compiled a list of,
Sure.
or just randomly asking the questions that are on the list. Have you ever shown yourself to be an independent-minded, nonpartisan, fact-based decision-maker and leader within our community?
I think the answer to that is a resounding yes. Um, as you all know, I serve on the Central Committee for the Republican Party in Wycomico County, and I'm in my second term. I do not always get along with my party, um, for many reasons, because I feel like the right thing is the right thing. And I'm not afraid to, as you, I'm sure, well know, um, communicate my thought processes on those things, so yes.
How do you bring a unique perspective to this body?
I think that I've had a lot of years of experience. I think I'm the most qualified candidate that you have to choose from. Um, I have lived and, uh, was raised on the eastern shore, I have worked in business here. I have worked in politics as, on a grassroots level and in an official capacity. I've interacted with all of you in many different occasions. I know, um, the issues of the county. I know a tremendous amount of people in this county who are free to speak to me. I'm the most open person that can tell me anything, and I would welcome that. Um, I, I feel that my uniqueness is that I have probably the, the most experience of anyone I speak to.
I guess I'm next. Uh, number four, the county's charter is a document that spells out the powers, duties, and structures of government and the rights of citizens. How familiar you are, familiar are you with the county's charter?
I am familiar in so much that there has been some recent changes. I try to familiarize myself, um, certainly looked up the charter that was applicable to this uh, position. And I, you know, as, uh, as issues arise, it's a rather large document, so as issues arise, I know how to, uh, reference the document and look at it and understand how it applies to, uh, whatever the subject may be.
I guess the question I'd ask is that, um, most people are very familiar with the, the issues countywide. Of course, it's always in the paper, as much as we like to keep it out of the paper, can't always help that. Um, I didn't know if you were familiar with any, uh, issues or if there were any specific, um, items, uh, in reference to the actual District Two. Mark Kilmer was an excellent representative, because he was always talking to everyone in his district.
That's right.
I didn't know if you were familiar with any issues in District Two specifically that you think maybe, um, would need to be brought to council's attention?
Um, I am not specifically aware of any particular main issues. I've spent time in Sharp Town, I've spent time in all of District Two when I ran for office. And, you know, I live in a very rural area there, so there's only a couple farmers I talk to where I'm at. But, um, it would be my intent and great desire to make sure that I, uh, attend all, uh, events in District Two. Get to know, uh, what concerns people, address it to the best of my ability, be very active in that district, and make sure that people know that I'm open, open and approachable to, uh, bring up any concerns they may have.
Josh?
Yeah, uh, well, more recently, there's been a lot of people adding on to that, you know, a lot of the news coverage about the difference between the executive and legislative branches and what our roles are. I don't know if you wanted to, uh.
You skipped one, Josh. I'm supposing you get six.
We'll come back to that, it's okay. I'll, I'll stick with that design.
Okay.
Or, we're just reading same, reading same questions, everybody, so you know.
Well, I am old enough to remember when there wasn't a county executive and this body took care of everything. Um, that is kind of my preferred, but it is what it is. Uh, I certainly do understand the roles, uh, for the layman, I would liken it to, you know, the governor and the legislative body in the state of Maryland. Um, you guys are the legislative body. I would like to see better relationships in those areas. I don't know what I can add. Um, I feel, uh, good relationships with all of you, and I feel like I have a good relationship with Bob Culver, so, um, uh, that's all I have to really add to it.
Why do you want to be on the county council, and do you have an agenda you would like to share?
Um, as I stated when I first sat down, it really wasn't my intent. I wanted to do it, uh, last year, and I have sought public office before. Um, and, and I, the only way I really can explain it, and some of you may understand because you find yourself in public service also. But, uh, it must be in my DNA. My uncle was Hemmer White, he was a delegate and Senator Democrat in the state. My dad was a World War Two veteran, there is, you know, service to this state. Uh, actually, you know, I have, uh, relatives that were involved in the constitution of, of the state of Maryland. Um, I didn't know any of this going into this, I just felt a call to, um, be the voice of, of people. But when I look back and I understand where I'm wired for it, uh, that's the only real explanation I can give you, I wanna help.
Any other questions from anybody else?
What's up with your position in education?
I think we need, um, the best education that, um, you know, we can offer. Uh, my concern is, you know, we see an expanding cost to that without a great deal of, of accountability. I see expansions to, uh, programs that are involving, you know, preschool, and, and while the intent, I feel, is very good, and I wish we could do everything. I have a lot of concerns, um, about going over maintenance of effort and making this county less affordable. So, uh, the key would be a balance somehow, that there is accountability to the money we're spending, so we can offer the best. We have to do the best we can for all children in this county, it's our responsibility, truly believe that. And some kids do not have the advantage of others, that's just a fact. Uh, but how we do it that's responsible to the people paying the tab is also extremely important. And while the best of intentions, um, are the best of intentions, any thought to, uh, increasing stress on a family is something that really, really needs to give pause for thought.
What do you mean, increasing stress to a family?
If we are, you know, accommodating these extra, um, costs by increasing taxes on, on local residents.
But we're not raising any taxes here. What, what's your opinion on taxes? No, I won't get on that.
Keeps the cap, tax cap.
Any other questions from anybody?
We've got all script, we're pretty strong. I'll go to six.
Sorry.
Okay.
A person selected must resign in council meeting, District Two. Are you a full-time resident of the District Two? If not, please explain how you meet this qualification.
Yes, as explained earlier, I moved down to Harkenworth Road, um, as a result of the divorce, and that is my permanent residence.
You're gonna be staying there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the only one we skipped, Joe, because, uh, Josh kinda started with that, he messed the whole thing up. Any other, any other things anybody wants to ask in particular? All right, thank, all right, you, again, I think you wanna act, because.
No, I, I mean, I just wanna reiterate, I mean, the reason I'm here is I believe that, um, I'm the one person that, that will be, uh, able to be reelected. I think that's important to this council for continuity. I also believe that if we're looking at integrity of Mark Kilmer and his position, I'm very closely aligned with, uh, you know, certainly his economic beliefs. And, uh, number three, um, if you look at the numbers in District Two, it just made me, uh, realize I had to call in to come and see you and talk to you about this because, um, you know, the, the numbers speak for themselves.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming.
Good luck in your selection.
Thank you. You can take that cup with you if you want, or you can leave it here, don't mind.
Sarah, you wanna come up with an interview also? No, just kidding.
Afternoon, Joe. Hello, Joe, honey. Yeah, please do. Trying to see what kind of tie you got there. I like the, oh, you got a lurdu bow and, uh.
My constitution tie.
Appreciate you, uh, coming in early, I think we are actually pretty much on schedule right now, anyway, we've gotten back to schedule. It's, uh, somewhat informal, you know, um, if you wanna give us like a, just a very brief bio, Joe, and, um, then we have some, some prepared questions and some questions we might wanna ask off the cuff, so you head the floor.
Okay, uh, sure, I was, um, uh, came to the shore, Wycomico County in nineteen ninety-one, uh, moved to Mardella and, uh, sorry, if I may. Uh, came to Wycomico County in nineteen ninety-one, uh, Mardella in, uh, ninety-eight. Uh, first job, uh, was, uh, flying for a corporation here in Wycomico County, kind of my first flying job out of college, uh, after the military. And, um, uh, lived, uh, uh, lived in the Northwood Industrial Park in, uh, a trailer, um, that was, uh, made a thousand bucks a month. So, uh, for a, a local, local company. And, uh, met a really, uh, wonderful, um, I am a come here, she's a from here. Met a really wonderful, uh, young lady, and we dated for a long time and decided to get married and settle down and have a family.
Was she a Democrat or Republican?
I think at this juncture, I would say no comments. But, uh, no, no, uh, to answer the questions specifically.
No, no, don't answer that question. Because they oughta get accused for asking it.
Okay, all right, all right. So, uh, uh, but, 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 yeah, um, uh, and, um, worked on my craft of aviation, uh, all these years. And, um, nine eleven took me through a furlough that took me working in, um, uh, Puerto Rico and Denver, Colorado. And then ended up coming back to, uh, the major airline that I work for, Washington DC-based. Uh, we, uh, lost, uh, through a bankruptcy process, we lost our retirement. And I became involved in, uh, our Pilots Association. I'm, uh, one of, that's another board I serve on currently. Uh, it, it is, uh, the Allied Pilots Association Board, I'm a board member, and there are six hundred pilots in DC that I am, uh, responsible for. That is, uh, uh, one of the things that, that, that I do. Gosh.
Sorry?
Yeah, yeah. Sure, sure, and my, 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 kind of moving back home, uh, my, my political experience, um, I know that some of you were on council, uh, uh, back when I, I wanted to get involved and understand more about what was happening. I guess, um, you know, each job that I've had, be it, um, uh, redistricting committee, central committee, or Board of Elections, those jobs I've had here in the county, each of those things have had a, um, certain kind of set of, uh, operational requirements, rules to follow. And, uh, I've tried to do that. I, I would, I would say in retrospect, um, my, uh, viewpoint of governance has, uh, uh, grown, uh, over the years. And, uh, to, to govern, to, um, to govern means to, to find a way forward, uh, being, uh, considerate of both sides and, and many viewpoints. And then finding the best, uh, uh, way forward for, uh, those you're charged with representing. And, and, uh, you know, that, that's, uh, that's, that, that's a view that maybe I didn't always understand fully, uh, until, uh, the governor appointed me to, uh, the Board of Elections position. And understanding budgets and what an unfunded mandate is and, and, and things of that nature, really kind of coming to understand, uh, what, what all that means uh, for the taxpayer and, uh, for the local businesses, um, large and small.
Good, all right, thank you, appreciate it. Julie, you wanna?
Sure. Joe, we have, uh, several questions, and, uh, there's no particular order to these or anything, they're, they're not personal questions.
They're not personal questions of each of us. We just compiled these together, and so they're random, but we're each going to ask you some of these questions.
Yes, sir.
If you are chosen to be the new council person, what would be your top three priorities?
The first thing that comes into my mind is represent my district and all the citizens of Wycomico County. I would comply with US Constitution, state constitution, county charter. If you're asking me like legislative priorities or those things that are important to me, the people, maybe the people that have no voice, education would be important to me. Agriculture is important to me. I live rural, always have my entire life, and that is something that's important to me. Again, clean water, good schools. That's off the top of my head, sir.
Thank you.
Ernie? How have you shown yourself to be an independent-minded, nonpartisan, fact-based decision-maker and leader within our community?
Well, you know, it's my work on the board of elections. I would invite you to speak with Sharon Morris and Katrina Purnell, and I, I think that they would be able to tell you that, or my work on the registering committee whereby I think just about every vote was, you know, 100% in unison, just, just like very, very many of the votes at the board of elections. Again, working across the aisle and being able to find a way forward that everyone agrees on, I think has real value for the community.
Joe, you have a question?
Third one's kind of almost like the second one. How do you bring a unique perspective to this body as the council legislative branch? And it's a tough question. I don't know how to give an answer to that, but anyway, it's on here.
Could you repeat the question and give me, give me a moment to kind of formulate?
How do you bring a unique perspective to this body, the council legislative branch? So how would you be, what would you offer different than some of the other council people, or what would your approach be, I guess?
Well, again, again, I think...
That's not a very good question.
Well, no, no, it's, it's good enough, and it's, it's fair enough. I, I am employed essentially outside of the county, and I, I make my living in the air. I'm exposed to a lot of different people, a lot of different communities. And again, I am in very good company, very experienced company. And so I, I have observed of late decisions that have been made that have kind of taken all concern into consideration. That's, that's a tough one, Joe. I, I hope that I would bring, I would hope I would bring me, no, yeah. I would, I would hope that, that, I would hope, again, that I would represent the people of my district as well as my predecessor, whoever, whoever the choice would be, of course, but as well as Mark Kilmer has, at least in my experience in talking with the people he represents. That would be job one. But again, I don't know, it's been a while since someone who really cared about, I don't say cared, but someone who is always concerned of agriculture, these are things important to me. But I'm in very good company, gentlemen. I hope that my, my job would be to get along and, and learn.
The county charter itself, you know, it sort of establishes the priorities. It's sort of the document that we have to follow that defines duties between the executive and legislative branch and so, so. I was just curious if you, how familiar you were, if you'd had that opportunity to be that familiar with the charter.
Yeah, over the weekend, I read through the county charter. I also read the Hebron, Sharp Town, and Mardella charters. Those are kind of out West. Certainly, certainly people that are important to me. Tried to familiarize myself with all of those. I think section 802 I thought was interesting, the one that dealt with, I think it takes five votes in order to fund a budget or fund something that is, where there's not a bid process. And so I, I found that, I found that interesting. I was not aware of that prior to actually kind of combing through the charter and seeing that. But again, each job I've had, and especially my career, there are a set of rules to follow, and I am duty and honor bound to follow those rules.
Josh?
There are certainly countywide problems that need to be resolved, but there's also problems that are specific to your district, District Two. Can you name some of the concerns that have been recently discussed for District Two?
Well, probably the most recent, there have been some concerns about sludge and its composition makeup. Again, there are many farmers that use that material, and there are farmers who do not. It's my understanding that currently the county, you can't legislate looking backwards, but you can look at things going forward. West Side specifically, we've had flooding issues. I understand there's landfill issues, there's nursing homes out, out on the west side that need to be considered. These are, these are all things that would be important to me.
The person that's selected obviously has to reside in...
Excuse me?
Yep.
I would be remiss if I did not mention Barron Creek Road, so. Thank, Bill, forgive me. Thank you.
Actually, just to share with the council, we were talking about the spreading liquid, sludge.
Sludge, yeah.
That's what they're doing across from my house this morning.
So you're aware as, right.
And you're in a hurry to get home?
Yeah, yeah, I won't be deceived. Anyhow, the person that's selected obviously has to live in District Two. We have asked this question of each of the candidates. Are you a full-time resident of District Two? And if you're not, can you explain how you, how you meet this qualification?
Oh, I, I live at 23550 Taylor's Trail, Mardella Springs, Maryland, and I built, I built a home in a field starting in 1998. And gee whiz, I only recently just finished it, kind of. So, yeah, been there the whole time, never left.
That was an easy one.
Yes, sir, thank you. Oh, absolutely, I plan on staying, yes, sir.
Do you remember when it used to be called the Athol Holobond?
Yes, sir, and... Okay, we're going to have to talk about that. Yeah, that's right, yeah. So LA, Lower Athol is...
I grew up on Baptist church, so...
Oh, yeah, okay. I don't think I knew that. Right on.
Please explain the difference between executive and legislative branches of government.
Sure, we have a, we have a legislative, sorry, we have an executive form of government here. As I recall from my reading, you guys can actually vote to end that. There is, I believe, is there something that, that, there's something in the charter I read about, maybe that was...
No, we could, we could vote to put that on referendum.
Put that on referendum, that's what I was looking for. Thank you, thank you, John.
But you're right, yes.
Yeah, the, the money is here, and the executive power rests with the executive.
It's my turn. Why do you want to be on the county council? And do you have an agenda that you would like to share? I think you've probably already answered that question earlier about some of the issues, but you want to?
I have no agenda. I have no agenda other than to serve my community, which is important to me. And because I was, frankly, because I was asked. And I know you, all of you gentlemen have a very hard decision. There have been four well-qualified people, and I will respect the decision this body makes, and I'm sure it's going to be the right one for the district and for the people of Wycomico County.
Will you run for reelection if you win, if you're appointed this time when the term is up?
I'm wired to say yes, of course, but, but that will ultimately be up to the, how well I, I serve my constituency.
Seems like the biggest issues that always come before us, that have in the last few years, has always been, always seems to revolve around land use. You know, whether it's like you touched on briefly, the fact that there's this, you know, the 300 billion gallon tank of sludge. That's, that's, that's land use based on the fact that the people that own that property have the right to do what they want with the property. But it's also that balance between what about the rights of the people that live next door? And that, those are always the most controversial issues. So I just wonder where, how you see the lay of the land when it comes to agricultural, when it comes to property rights, when it comes to zoning issues, septic systems, things like that. It's a real simple question.
I, I would, I, I would, I would seek the counsel of my peers on, on council. I'd look at applicable state and county laws and, and then hopefully make a successful decision among us all.
If you were to, I guess it's not fair to ask you yet, though, but, well, I could switch on that. I'd ask you also about education, like where are you with education? Imagine 2022 is being put out there with pre-K and a direction as far as where, where the superintendent wants to go for the next few years. I don't know if you've had a chance for any input on that.
John, I need to be, I would need to familiarize myself with that more. I will tell you that I'm a fan of keeping Mardella in Mardella.
Anyone else?
Joe, sure. You know, Mark, Mark Kilmer resigned, and Mark spent a lot of time servicing his constituents, traveling around, not just necessarily his district, but on the west side where Ernie's at too, you know, the fire departments and to, to beef somebody that wasn't from here. You know, Mark didn't grow up, grow up here. He became accepted pretty, pretty rapidly and had a lot of folks that thought a lot of him. Would you be willing to step up and spend that kind of dedicated time like Mark did?
Oh, of, of course, and I have, I have, I have friends in, in all the west, west side communities, ever, ever, I think, from Sharp Town to Mardella to Nanaco Bi-Valve and in Hebron as well. Go to church and I went to church for, for many, many years, Athol Baptist, and now I go to church, we go to church in Hebron. It's, I, I, yeah, I have, I have friends in, in many places throughout the county.
You feel like you have the time?
Yes, sir. I, well, I would, I would make the time, and, and, yeah, absolutely, because that is what the job entails, and that's what I have agreed to sign up for.
Are you able to be flexible with your current job?
One month out, and, and that is, Josh, that's a great question, and it's an important issue. My schedule is dictated to me a month in advance. There are some points where I have some flexibility, but it is not always guaranteed flexibility. So that, that is an issue whereby I need to plan out, you know, usually by, I have to start submitting, it's called a bid, a scheduling bid, around the 10th of the month. And then, so, so I really want to have something set for the coming month kind of in stone at that point. I've been able to successfully do it around elections times for board of elections. And there are other times when, you know, we have the ability for board elections meetings to, to telepresence, but, but I don't think we can do that here, nor would I want to.
Our meetings are several years in advance?
Yes, I, yes. And I will tell you that I, I actually, as an experiment, I was able to bid this month successfully to be able to be here for, I essentially overlaid Mark Kilmer's schedule onto my own, and I was able to successfully bid that schedule. But that's a, thank you.
So have you spent some time with Mark talking about the issues of his district and the west side?
Absolutely. I could, I could kind of go into greater detail. I, I considered, I considered calling key folks in each of the communities, but I, I really didn't want to be perceived as someone who was really trying to, to drive and politic to get this job. And that has nothing to do with not having a desire to serve, but it's the method in which I seek to represent my constituency, which would be, again, with fairness and, again, outreach to all communities and ensuring that everyone feels that they have a voice.
Everybody have anything else? Anything you want to share with us, Joe?
I, I am honored that I've even, that I've even been considered for this position. I would ask Bill McCain or anyone else that I hope that I am judged by my body of work and that I hold and that I'm here before you today. And because again, Sharon Morris said something once, she said, "Government must, must, must be experienced to be understood." And certainly, working on the board of elections has, has taught me that, that no truer words were spoken. And it truly means reaching out and finding common ground and finding a way forward.
Anybody else?
Good.
Joe, we appreciate you taking the time. We appreciate you offering to be in this position. Congratulations on being one of the chosen four.
Thank you, sir. Thank you again.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good one, man.
Right, gentlemen, that's all we have for that. I can move to adjourn.
Let's move to adjourn.
Here's adjourn.